I want to call the June 24, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council to order. I want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chamber tonight. I also want to welcome those who might be watching this on Channel 10. I want to welcome those who might be watching this or listening to us on their computers, those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government. We hope you'll participate in it any way that works for you. So, again, I welcome you. Ms. Clark, take the roll call of the council members.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, we'll have, I'm going to ask everybody to rise. We'll have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation led by Councilmember Pansky.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation I'd like to read tonight. Will I read the proclamation? I'd like the Talbert family to come up with me. They would? And we're going to look out this way. Okay? So people can see you on television. You okay? Okay, I have a proclamation as I indicated before. The proclamation, whereas June 30, 2014 will be the fifth annual AMC Awareness Day, and whereas arthrogyroposis is defined as multiple congenital from birth joint contracture or multiple joints which are stuck in one position and have very little flexibility, and whereas arthrogyroposis is an umbrella diagnosis with many syndromes and subtypes and occurs on approximately one in 3,000 live births, and whereas arthrogyroposis may be caused by unborn baby not moving properly during fetal development, and whereas stretching, various therapies, physical, occupational, speech, etc., and some surgical intervention can help improve someone's independence level and quality of life, and whereas AMC Awareness Day is sponsored by Arthrogyroposis Multiplex Congenital Support, Inc., a fully volunteer-based 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization which hosts yearly conferences and maintains a free online message board system. Now therefore, I, Bert Tower, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim June 30, 2014, is Arthrogyroposis Awareness Day in the City of Oshkosh and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthwhile observance. I'm going to pass the microphone on to Mr. Talbert here. If you'd like to introduce your family, if you'd like to make a couple of comments.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. My name is Jennifer Tabbert. This is Caroline. We have Kaylee, my husband Nick, and our son, Colson. And Colson is seven years old and he has arthrogyroposis, multiplex congenita. And just this proclamation really means a lot to bring awareness. We've come across a couple other kids that live in Oshkosh that do have this condition, and so we're hoping to connect with them at some point and then, you know, just continue to learn and grow. And so this really means a lot to us, so thank you.
Thank you for making us aware. Can I give you the proclamation here? Can I give it to Colson or would you? Can you hold that there?
No.
Okay? Is that okay? Okay, thanks for being here. We appreciate it. This is a time when citizens have an opportunity to come up to the microphone. The microphone is open, and if they have something that they would like to say about the city, something positive, some good things that are going on, or some concerns that they may have with how things are going on in the city, this is a time to do it. I would urge you, if you come up to the microphone, give us your name, address, limit your comments no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council, no election earring. So, if you'd like to come up, if anybody would like to come up at this point.
Looks like I'm becoming a familiar face here. Well, we get it today here.
We need your name and address.
Oh, sorry. My name is Gordon Omen, and I am the property owner on 1333 Bowen Street, and my special assessment is $11,509. Okay. I'm the lucky one who has a house on the corner, and I am here to just say exactly the same thing I said the last time. The price is actually a half of my annual income, okay? And this is not a street reconstruction, right? A regular street reconstruction when we have all of this, you know, a special assessment. This is a capital improvement, you know, project. So, somebody will benefit from it, not us. Our properties will not benefit from it because the street was in a fair good condition. We didn't have any problems with the sidewalks. We didn't have really much problems with our sewer. We didn't have a backup in the basement. We didn't have stuff like that. So probably somebody does, and then of course, you know, probably Bowen was the decision, you know, to be made to do it. When it comes to Bowen Street, we believe that cities should pay for concrete and should pay for the sidewalks. We don't, as I, we said, we, you know, as I said the last time, it's not that we don't want to pay anything. We know that this infrastructure is aged, but it's not our problem that whoever did the street in 1988, and that was at that time again the city, I'm not saying you guys, okay, but whoever was at that time, didn't do the right job. So why should we pay the price because, you know, somebody else made the mistake? Just, and doing that, these properties have been already once assessed. The question is, how many times you can assess the property, you know, not the property owner, I'm talking about the properties. And we believe that the city should pay for the concrete of the street and pay for the sidewalks. Our understanding about the sidewalks, I just want to point out, was that nothing really much will happen there. It's just, it's just going to be a, like, you know, we'll replace the ones that they're bad, right? Let's put it in plain English. Well, I want to show you pictures, how that plane looked like, and what actually is going to happen, and what is actually the situation right now in our.
Can you, you can just, you can just put them up on the machine. It's right there.
Yeah, well.
That way everybody can see them and everybody can hear you at the same time, and we can record it.
I don't know how to do this to begin with.
Just put it down. Just put it on there.
Nope, put it up.
Do it face up.
Put it the other way.
Oh, face up.
Okay.
Okay, and? So, you can see, they tore up every single sidewalk, side block, you know, the whole sidewalks are actually torn up, you know, on the, on the one side of the side of the Bowen Street. And it looks this is going to be widened because it has been taken from our properties. I can see on the corner of Custer and Bowen, let me show you that, you will see how much has been taken from that corner. You can see how nice it is, and you can tell how wider it's going to be. When we talked about it before, and when we got the letters and stuff like that, here, it states here in the letter from actually Stephen, whatever, his assistant director of the Public Works, that the sidewalk estimate is going, will be replaced, only the ones where we built, for only the ones that are going to be replaced. Not everything torn up. Because we were wondering, why do we have to pay, you know, $1,900 for sidewalks? Now we know, because everything has been, you know, torn up. So, also, I took your, I printed out, because we do know that there are hardships, okay, here, and most of these people are actually, we all live in hardships. So, at your workshop in, I think, March 2012, you do have the option as a city council, okay, to either pay the portion or all of the, you know, special assessment, whatever that is. Also, the Wisconsin state also has a law that says here that repair at city expense. The council may provide that sidewalks shall be kept in repair and at the expense of the city, or may be directed at a certain portion or cost of the construction. So we are asking a city to pay for the concrete and for the sidewalks. We're not shying away of paying, you know, the portion because we were, you know, we have this, I don't know, whatever it's called, where we're hooked up for it, okay? Also, we found out yesterday, this is how my front yard looked like. Believe me, I was shocked. As far as I know, this is a private property, and nobody can dig in there without my permission or letting me know. I talked yesterday to your engineer, and he said, "Well, you know, you had the little curb, and we're going to level it, and we're going to, you know..." What are you going to level? With what? With the sidewalk? I mean, look at this. Would you like, would you be happy with this? No. And actually, it's again, why, he said, "Don't worry, you don't have to pay for it." That's not the point. The point is intention. How can you get into somebody's yard? And this is not mine, because today I actually went to our neighborhood, and some people have the same thing. How can, whatever is the reason behind it, it doesn't matter. This is a private property, and this is a violation of our, you know, property owners' rights. So, I really would like cities to get certain things together. I think there is kind of a misunderstanding, let's put it nicely, because we would like to believe something totally different when we talk here in the first meeting and when we talk to the people. Somehow, reality is totally different. So, as I said, we strongly believe that the city should pay for a concrete and for the sidewalks. And as I, you know, as I said, I can't, this is not a reasonable price, because...
Can you finish up?
Yeah. This is not a reasonable price, because reasonable price is not half of somebody's annual gross income. That's what we're talking about. So, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
To city staff? Mr. Potek?
How do I get into a long discussion here?
Okay, all right, no, no.
Quick question.
I believe the entire cost of this project is about $4.3 million. Is that correct? I think that's what was noted in the CIP.
That's what's noted in the CIP. I don't have the bid calculations.
All right, but, okay, but that's basically where we're, that's kind of where the starting point was. And that the special assessments, we understand your concerns about the special assessments. Of that 4.3, almost $4.4 million, special assessments are $324,000, and so therefore the city, quote unquote, is picking up about $4 million worth of the project. Is that correct?
That's what we show in the CIP as far as our budget estimates. That's correct.
So, in essence, probably about 90%, at least 90% of the cost is being picked up by the city.
Right. I believe the bids came in lower, so this is our initial estimate, but I don't know the actual bid numbers.
Okay. But the city is, in essence, what I'm getting at is the city is shouldering the vast majority of the cost of this project, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rich Snyder. I live at 1418 Bowen. What I don't understand, I have a problem with is, the road wasn't probably any worse than any other in town, and I don't think a lot of the problems with sewers or utilities were a big problem, other than any other part of the town. But I think the whole thing behind this is, they came through and put that big, whatever you want to call it, transfer pipe through there, and I think that's the main agenda of this whole thing. They had to tear everything out to get that six-foot pipe in there, because they want to eliminate a couple pump stations and whatnot, so they put that in first. We're not connected to that in any way. They put that in first and buried it 10, 12 feet down, and then they reconnected all our utilities back up. We're not even into that pipe. We're paying, not exactly for that pipe, but we're paying for everything to do that. Now, they rammed that down through New York Street, and none of the people had to pay for that. Why are we have to shoulder this payment for this? I don't understand that. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
Hello, I'm Diane Nichols, and I live at 1329 Bowen Street. And all I do is call them the wrecking crew. They can wreck everything possible when they dynamite it. I was calling way too Medicare at the time in Indiana, and the lady asked, "What on the earth is that?" And I said, "Them are diggers out there. They just shook our house like it was going to fall apart." And you sense that we have our front stone is all cracked on our Tennessee stone, and if they come around this side, we just have hunks out of it. And in our basement, we have one of the windows affixed, and it's unreal. And the guy, we asked everybody about six people, "Who's going to pay for this?" They said, "Well, you wanted a road, didn't you?" I said, "No, we did not want a road. We had almost the best road in the city, but we got one of the worst." And the trouble is, what I am complaining about, for about five or six times, I went down to the city hall and talked to the manager about our street light that has been removed for many years, right in front of our house, and it looks like a nightmare. People come down the street with a little tiny flashlight, have kids, and they cannot see, and it's so blasted dark, we drive in our driveway backwards, but we never get it. I went down to Jackie, there was a Jackie at the time, and she stopped me about five times and tried to get the serum, called the transportation and everything. One time, somebody fell on our sidewalk. Of course, who had to pay it? It was us, the ambulance, because they said, "If you would have fell on this side, then you wouldn't have had to pay." But since it, if you'd have fell on that side of the street, you wouldn't have had to pay. But since it fell on the person, you pay the ambulance. And we never did get relief. So we need some light, and the whole city street is really getting to be bad. People are saying they can hardly see. So would you see what we can do about it? We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
Hello, my name is Carmen Jones, and I live at 1405 Bowen Street. And I just wanted to address the hardship issue. We are, our portion of the money is just shy of $10,000, and that is something that we simply don't have. My husband is one of those 700 people that is getting laid off from Oshkosh truck this week, and I'm starting a new job, going back to work full-time, but I don't start for two weeks, and he still hasn't got a job. So, he's been hitting the road every day, trying to fill out applications, but that is something that's going to be an extreme hardship for us, because we can't go to a bank and get the money for a loan, because after 2008, our home is worth less than what we owe on it. So we can't even refinance to go get the money to pay the loan. And I don't understand why we're being charged 6% interest on this portion of money that we are supposed to pay. If we can't pay it right away, we are going to be charged the 6% interest, and I think that's very unfair, since we're paying for improvements that over half the city of Oshkosh is using. That is a main thoroughfare. It's not a tiny little side street where just us residents live on it. The city buses go down it, the fire trucks go down it, the police department goes down it. It is a main thoroughfare, and it is as busy sometimes, I think, as Jackson Street is. And I don't, I just think it's unfair that we are shouldering the majority of this burden, and that we're being charged interest on it, and that we don't even own it. We are essentially paying for something that we don't own. And if it's something that is for the benefit of the community, then the cost of it should be spread amongst the benefit of the community or amongst other community members, not just the homeowners. So I just wanted to make you aware of our situation, and that it's going to be very, very difficult for us to pay this.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward at this point?
My name's Roger Reiner. I live at 1409 Bowen Street. And actually, many months ago, I had contacted Steve about the project, Steve Herman, and somebody else. I apologize, I don't remember who it was. But, you know, I have concerns about the cost and how it all went down. I've done some studying on the statutes, and I can understand, you know, some of the basis, but, you know, the comment about, I do understand where most of the projects funded through, you know, the $4 million part, but, I mean, that's all our money, too. That's taxpayer dollars, so whether they get it on the tax rolls or get it through special assessment, we're paying for the project, you know? But my complaints are, you know, as was mentioned, the sidewalk, you know, we were told they were only going to take out the pieces they needed to. I came home from work yesterday, the entire sidewalk, as far as I can see, on both sides of the street is gone. So there's got to be extra costs there. There's costs in here that probably doesn't need to be there. My side, my driveway was fairly new. My home was built maybe five years ago. They came in and cut my driveway off way up from the sidewalk. So now I'm going to have a seam there, and I don't know what they're going to do with the pitch. You know, no one's communicated to us why the sidewalk's gone completely, why our driveways are cut off up from the sidewalk. And then another part of the justification for the police action is, you know, "The amount assessed against the parcels shall not be greater than the benefits accrued thereto from the improvements." Granted, this isn't, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for each of these families or us, but I would have a hard time saying my house is going to be worth $8,000 more because of this project. I don't believe it. I don't think anybody's, so that's my reason for believing this should be funded differently.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Okay, I'm just going to pose one question, because we're going to get into, we've talked about all these things before. The sidewalk part of it? Is there a comment on the sidewalk? Is that something?
Probably Mr. Godey can comment on that.
Just talk about the deed for the sidewalk, or what the sidewalk issue is, because that's something that hadn't been discussed before.
As is with any of the reconstruct projects, we have staff that walk the sidewalk beforehand and determine which stones are defective for cracks, pitch, excessive spalling. There was a large portion of this project that was deemed to have defects in the sidewalk that were assessable to the property owners. The remaining portions were so small that in order to complete the project more efficiently and actually get a better price on the concrete sidewalk, we scheduled all of the sidewalks to be removed along one side. The property owners are not assessed for that additional work that we added on there, but it was a decision to remove those extra squares, simply so we didn't leave one or two squares of old sidewalk every few hundred feet, and have issues with them wanting to shift, not being able to adjust the grade to make the, match the sidewalk in the driveways. The reason we need to adjust the driveway, the lot of the driveways is to put the sidewalk in at current American with disabilities X standards. We have to try to keep it, keep the driveway slopes in, flatten the sidewalk out typically where it's steeper through driveways in old areas of town, which means we need to go back on the private property, adjust that concrete driveway that comes in, and make everything tied together so that people don't bottom out and they pull out of the driveways.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question, Mayor. We have the information on the age of the sanitary water in storm. Could you roughly, do you know how old the street is?
I can address, do you have the CIP?
I don't have the CIP.
Okay. So the actual age of the street was constructed in 1968, so it's 46 years old. As far as the other items there in your CIP, where you have sanitary sewer from 1938, but I also have a note here that there was some sanitary sewer from 1947. The water was prior to 1950, and there was some minimal amount of storms that were put in in 1968.
Okay. And when we redo a street, Mr. Potek, what are the life expectancy of a street roughly?
I believe the municipal code says that a concrete street has to last at least 25 years for the special assessment. Do you remember if that's right, Steve? I think it's 25 years.
It's 25.
Yeah.
Okay. I did get a call from a citizen, and maybe you can just explain this little part. We did replace the storm sewer from Nevada up to Murdoch, but we blacktopped that, and we're not assessing anybody. Is that correct? Is that what we did in that section?
We extended the sanitary sewer.
Sanitary, okay, and it was one of them.
Yes. That was, that stretch of the project was originally scheduled for reconstruct. Budget constraints did not allow us to do the full reconstruct through that area that is being scheduled for a future year, and it is a temporary asphalt patch over the trench of the sanitary sewer pipe.
What about a couple of the sections of the curb and gutter that were taken out for that construction? Is that going to be repaired or replaced?
Those will be spot replaced as they come forward here. They have to get that work done, but in order to get the road open on the asphalt, we elected to let them leave that out temporarily.
And the intersection of Nevada and Bowen is going to be completely redone? I mean, the asphalt kind of goes a little north of the intersection, so that whole intersection is going to be?
Will be, will be a, I think, I believe the concrete pavement's going 30 to 50 feet north of the Nevada intersection, so that intersection will be fully complete when we're done.
Okay.
Mayor, I just, I want to make a comment.
Sure. Go ahead.
I had gotten contacted by County Board Supervisor Bill Wingren concerning the neighbors' issues, and Mr. Godey was sent a whole bunch of questions from Mr. Wingren, and he included me in the email, just to let everybody know. And Mr. Godey did an excellent job explaining it and everything. I did get invited to a meeting on Sunday night with the citizens, and we talked in length about the project and the things, and the big concern, again, is the concrete is their concern. But as I explained to them, and as Mr. Peck brought up, of this $4 million-plus project, 90, over 90% of the project is being paid for, other than special assessments, so.
Okay.
But I appreciate Mr. Godey taking the time to put all the answers together for citizens.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Anybody else come up that has spoken already?
My name is Sharon Kerner. I live at 709 Merritt. And I was just wondering, I don't know much about patching the streets, but if you go down by the Menominee Park, and you go down by the library, and you go, in many areas, even on Merritt where they've patched, they are so sunken that I'm wondering if they're going to go over it and repatch, or if that's going to stay like that all summer long, because it's a poor sign of what we do with our roads around places where people go from out of town, when they come to Menominee Park or that, just drive around there once. You have to watch your car or your truck, because it can bottom out some of these patches. So, do you know if they're going to repatch or level them out? Because some of the manhole covers are real low, and if you don't know exactly, I mean, it's like going through an obstacle course so that you don't drop your tires and everything else.
Can I just, general question on patches?
Sure. We have several programs going on at this time. We have a contractor that's working on fixing sanitary manhole casting. So if you see a patch, I know they've done some on Division Street, they've done some on Merritt right there by Main Street. We have that program going on that's supposed to be done in the next couple of weeks. So if there's a actual manhole casting, two-foot diameter casting, those with an excavation around it, that will be repaired in the next couple of weeks. We also have, the water utility had a record number of water main breaks in January, February, and March. So we have another contractor that's working on fixing those sections of pavement that were damaged with the water main breaks. That contractor's also fixing sidewalk in other areas of the city that aren't street reconstruction projects. So that contractor is working on that. He likely will be working on that for the next several months. So we have several projects going on. I understand, I've actually talked to Councilmember Herman about some of his concerns about areas that are temporarily patched. I guess all I can say is you have to have some patience. We're in the construction season, it's getting worked on. The intent is that, you know, by October, we're going to have everything fixed up again and go into another winter season.
Well, this, this patching by the park has been like that since last fall, when it was actually a manhole was put in it. I just think, I live on that side of town, and I think it's pretty run down. The streets are horrible, and so many people that I've talked to, even on this council, most of them don't live on the northeast side of town. They live over on the other side, and you drive on those streets, they don't all... They live over on the other side, and you drive on those streets, they don't all look like Parkway. And I think it's pathetic, so I just thought I'd point that out. What's the railroad tracks? God bless the railroad. But the railroad tracks on Merritt, again, are starting to, where the spikes are vibrating. So I would appreciate if someone could do something by letting the railroad know it's time they come through and make that at least stable again. Because I go over the railroad tracks with my truck now at about three miles an hour, four miles an hour, so that I don't, you know, you can actually see those spikes vibrating up and down now, so...
As far as the Menominee Park manhole, is that on Merritt?
Yes.
It's on Merritt?
Yeah, and it's a patching area. No, this road is so cracked and crumbled, they've patched it several times. But it sinks after a while, and I just wondered if for the summer, that if someone couldn't come around and just level that, so when you go down there for activities, you know, it looks a little reputable for our city.
Okay, do you have a, is it near Lindy, or where?
Yes, yes, right where you would enter the park from Lindy, in that area. That's the worst part.
That is a location where there's been some water main work done, not water main breaks, but water main extensions, and... I have to ask Mr. Godey where Merritt is on the schedule. Merritt is another one where when we have streets that we know are going to be completely reconstructed, we try to put in temporary patches, but I'll have to have someone take a look at that.
Okay, I appreciate it. And if someone checks on that railroad work, it's so bad. Thank you very much.
If I could just point one thing out to the gentle lady. Five of the councilors sitting up here now live on the north side of town.
Well, then, that's nice to know.
Almost all on the north, almost all on the northeast.
Almost all of us on the northeast side.
We understand that.
So we...
Okay, okay. Okay, anybody else care to come forward?
Yep.
My name is Patricia Deener. I live at 1316 Broad. And I would like to inform with our street. Dave, I think you're going to have to bow the horn more to supervisors. We're having a lot of water standing. They said they were going to be out about three or four weeks ago. The water's standing a lot.
Director of the council here, and then call him outside the meeting. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I don't know what the town is, boy, but everybody's in a fast move all the time. We had a speed sign put up last summer, and I'll tell you, there's people going 40, 50 miles an hour down the street. What's the big hurry? They beat the trains, they're moving. I don't know, maybe we have to put the speed down. They're catching, because very seldom, now, we haven't seen, police in the area. We've seen two last night, not for a while. And I know the city's been out trimming trees due to yield signs, stop signs, and regular signs. It's a shame when you have your city people working out there, and people come out and they don't like what the city's doing. I thought it was that the city owned the terrace and the sidewalk, but we pay for the maintenance. I requested some trees to be trimmed. So I didn't get a break early in the morning. I waited for a while. I said, "They're working down the street." I said, "Great." I said, "A young gentleman hit a branch, and he has brain damage, and he ran into it." So they started trimming the trees, and I stood on by one of my neighbors I know, and he said, "I got to take that down." So the neighbor is probably talking like the young lady here. "Well, this is private property. You can't enter on private property." "Well, if you can't see yield signs, stop signs, you're waiting to cause an accident when the city wants to come out." And I do appreciate the guys that did the work. They did a great job. I appreciate the guys that cut our lawn. The only thing I ask is, it's been mentioned by my daughter and a few neighbors, you know, there was a tragedy accident in the coming year. But the sister of the person that was injured put up some stuff, and it actually all got damaged. So we're going to try to make an area so the city, when they come, cut the grass, so the stuff don't get destroyed. And I want to thank Dave. He's out of Country USA. I've seen him Sunday out there. And I asked him if I could get some tickets. He told me he sold out. I said, "Thanks to EA Jewelry." I got two of them, and I'm excited to go. And I know that the county stepped in for parking. Very enthusiastic.
Let me wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken? You've already spoken, then.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask if the council would waive the rules and give the gentleman another three minutes or so. Could you make your comment in three minutes?
Wait a second.
Is that, the council willing to do that?
No, the council has the ability to do it.
All right.
We're going to exercise character.
Yes, I understand.
Workshop, open debate.
No, I understand.
My name is Rich Snyder, 1418 Bowen. With Mr. Godey, he talked about why they are doing what they are with the sidewalks, but nobody still said anything about this pipe and why New York doesn't have to pay for it, had to pay for that going through. But we're still, I don't understand why we got this big pipe going through, and I think that's got a lot to do with why we're paying for the rest of the road. They had to tear it all out to put that big pipe in, and nobody's addressed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the question about what people on New York paid. If you remember, we only removed half of the street on New York between Hazel and Bowen. And because we only removed half of the street, the utility paid, because it wasn't a complete reconstruct. But between Bowen and Jefferson, there was a total, actually, between Bowen and the railroad tracks, there was asphalt pavement put in that was assessed. And then between the railroad tracks and Jefferson, there was concrete pavement put in. So there was a significant portion of New York that had an interceptor put on it that had to pay special assessments.
Based on how much of the road was done?
Well, on the first section closer to Bowen, we were able to save the curb, so it had asphalt pavement. We just put the asphalt pavement back, didn't charge people for the curb, but made them pay for the asphalt. We didn't replace the water main. We didn't replace the laterals. I think we just fixed the interceptor and put some storm sewer in. So in the future, there's going to be a total concrete project between the railroad tracks and Bowen. But between the railroad tracks and Jefferson, those people paid just like these people are paying.
Thank you. Anybody else? Same done? Huh? No, you've already. Not inclined, which councilman wants to do it. This could go on all night, so...
Well, I would ask the council's indulgent to bend our rules a little bit more and give the gentle lady an additional two minutes. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, let's, we've got to limit this.
No, I understand, but...
It's very hard when you talk and then people discuss, and then you don't have a chance to go back and, you know, respond.
You're using your two minutes.
Sorry. Oh, I love to talk. Actually, about, we're going back to, that's what you, you know, said about that the city is paying for 90% of this, you know, for this project. Of course it is, but I think that the city should pay really 100%, because in his report, and Mr., okay, City Manager's report on October 29, 2013, he said, "Because the city did not invest a great deal in a capital replacement over time." So a question is, where is the money that we actually paid through our, you know, water bills for our sewer, for our runoff, if the money hasn't been invested in, you know, in all these projects? And to go back to this 25 years, you know, that Mr., you know, Director of the Public Works, you know, said, I actually came across this Midwest Engineering Services, you know, survey that actually you contracted, I mean, CP of Oshkosh contracted. And it's very interesting what it says about Bowen Street and the concrete, because it says here, "Pavement along the Bowen Street within a project limit consists of Portland, whatever." Which was observed to be generally in a fair condition. That's all I had. I think my two minutes are over. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Hello, my name is Tim Finley. I live on 1315 Bowen. I think some of the general confusion that we have as residents there is that the project is, from what we're told, to deal with stormwater runoff issues on Bowen Street. And I think that the concern that we have is that we've never noticed any issues or any problems leading up to this. So age aside, everything seemed to be working fine. And I know this because I'm actually professional in the realm of puddle finding, because I have three little boys. And we run and jump in puddles, so we know where to find them, and you can't find them on Bowen Street. You never could. In 10 years we lived there. So part of my concern is that it's a hard pill for us to swallow. When we look out there and we see very good stormwater runoff, we don't see any problems, no puddles. I can go three streets over and find it up to your ankles, and so can my boys. And I guess that's why you see people, in my opinion, looking for other reasons why this project is going forward, trying to look at the pipe issue. Is this something that they're trying to get through, or whatever? I think a lot of that concern arises from the reasons given so far, from what we're hearing, about stormwater runoff issues that we've never seen. Does anybody have any clarification for me on that? Am I...
Well, I can read what it says in the capital improvement program. Full reconstruction of the street, including public utilities and laterals from New York to Nevada. Proposed 42-foot width concrete pavement in a 60-foot right-of-way sidewalk. Sections will be repaired as needed. From East Nevada to East Murdoch, a large sanitary interceptor will be extended. Pavement area of the interceptor replacement will be patched with asphalt in anticipation of future reconstruction. So this project was never based on having a problem with stormwater. We knew we had old water mains and old sanitary sewers. Those were what were the drivers for replacement of, or pushing this project on the list as a street reconstruction project.
So is the cost of the reconstruction inflated by replacing the stormwater runoff, then?
One of the mistakes that the city has made over the years...
I want to talk, go on.
Yeah, one of the mistakes the city's made over the years is that when we've done a street improvement, we've only corrected one utility rather than the multitude of utilities. Our expectation is, even though we guarantee the road for 25 years, we believe the road can last 50 years. And I think that Mr. Potek talked about the age of the street from the 19...
Forty-six.
Forty-six years, so it's exceeded, it's almost doubled its useful life. We don't want to go in and fix one utility and then go back 10 years when that utility fails. We'd rather not react to these things. We'd rather be proactive. So the age of all those utilities are in excess of their useful life. So it's important that we stay on top of those things, especially First Street, as important as Bowen. But that's why we assume 90% of the cost, because when we take on a street like Bowen, as many of the residents have said, Bowen is one of our collector's streets. It's very important. Some of the smaller streets, if you live on a residential street that doesn't take as much traffic as Bowen, they'll assume a much larger share of the cost. But the costs that are being assessed to each of the property owners is comparable to what other property owners have, what you would have if it was done on your individual streets. Because we recognize a street like Bowen has what's called overbuild. You need to overbuild that street because it does take more traffic. It requires more traffic if it takes truck traffic. It may or may not in this case, but we always factor those things in. So you're only paying comparable to what you would pay if you lived on a similar residential street that didn't have that amount of traffic. And that's because of the fairness issue. We had our special assessment workshop a couple of years ago, where we talked about a lot of those things, and that's typically what we do.
I appreciate that response, gentlemen. One final concern. Is there a method for, a lot of our residents that live on our street, I know personally, live on fixed incomes, and they live on a whole lot less than what I have to live on. And I'm just wondering if there's any sort of recourse for them. People that are living on social security, people that are living on their benefits, you know, from being a veteran and things like that. And I think that there should be some consideration for that. If the city's already picking up 90%, the extra 10% or another 5% would go a long way for somebody with a fixed income that lives on our street. Talking about home values in the, you know, 60s in some cases, and a lot less than that in others, so to assess them $7,000 or more, it's 10%, excuse me, 10% of their home value, and that's quite a bit. It's a hard pill to swallow. Any response on other methods or any kind of recourse for us, for people on a fixed income? I think it's a very important issue.
I would encourage you to go back to the May 2012 workshop, because that issue was addressed. And we did surveys of other communities, and some communities do it differently from us. The one thing we do, even though it's not officially for hardship cases, what we do is we have a payment plan that can stretch your payments over 15 years. Most communities only do it about 10 years, but we've stretched it out over 15 because we recognize the potential hardship it can be, particularly for people who are on fixed incomes or low-income areas. So we do provide you with an option. Once we send out the bill, the likelihood of this bill getting sent out this year is probably pretty low, because the project's going to take time to get fixed. So we'll probably be putting it out sometime next year, probably early spring, which means that the first installment wouldn't be payable until the end of 2015, beginning of 2016. So there's actually another year to put that, so that people can plan accordingly. It also gives the Public Works Department time to make sure the bill is accurate, because the amount that you were sent on your, on the notice is the maximum that we can charge without doing another public hearing. So you could, you're not going to pay any more than what we had, but it could be less. Public Works goes through it to make sure that we've got all our costs covered. And if it's less, then we'll bill you less for that as well. But the hardship issue is the whole idea behind the 15-year payment plan.
Then may I...
To answer your questions, we really don't have a hardship issue per se. We don't charge on the basis of level of income, which would be inappropriate. Fixed income means a lot of things to different people.
I understand.
And that's true. So we don't charge for this on the basis of income.
But there's no application process or no consideration given to people on a fixed income? And if I can just recommend respectfully that you guys consider that, because, and girls, consider that, because I think that's a very important part in just stretching the debt across 15 years at interest costs payable to the person who's stretching it across 6% interest. It's more than a home mortgage interest that we're paying, so that doesn't really do it for me. And I'm really thinking that for people that are on a fixed income, there should be an application process. Somebody that's living on $30,000 a year or less, I mean, there should be some consideration for that.
I understand. So, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Wendy Reiner, and I live at 1409 Bowen. And I wanted to bring up the same thing he did, the personal side of all this and what it's done to the people, especially, and I know you say there's no hardship, but it is a hardship. I know our neighbors left their home, because they had been saving money to, you know, add to their home, to, you know, do improvements to their home. But they had to decide, are they going to pay the $9,000 or fix their house? They had to choose between one or the other, and they left their home. And I understand that we all, and we all want to be safe. We want to have good roads. But the gentleman that said something about only repairing the sidewalks, the squares that were bad, but having to take it all out anyway, I still have a hard time believing that we're not in some way paying for that through the labor of the workers or something. I've known other people that did that with sidewalk squares and things, and they had a choice of doing it, having someone hired to do it, or, but just changing the squares that were bad. I want, I really am curious where you came up with a 6% interest, because that, I think that part of it really surprised me. And like my husband Roger said, we came home one day, and a third of our own driveway was gone. It's been a hard thing. We've only lived in Oshkosh for three years. And so this came, you know, at such a time that, you know, we're still paying on our home and things like that. And I just wonder if a lot of those issues are looked at. And I think that the interest rate, I guess I'd like to understand that more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you explain the same thing you explained to us at the councilman? We don't want to be the bank.
Sure, various municipalities do it different ways. We have a set interest rate. The premise is that the city, the purpose of it is not to be a bank, as it were. It's encouraging people to find alternate financing. But given the fact that we do incur that cost, we do hold the risk that we have an interest rate that's a couple points, it's about a couple points above what we borrow at. Some people float it administratively. We just set it at 6%. Regardless of what our rate is that we borrow at, we set it at 6%. So administratively, we can keep track of, regardless of when the project was built, we have a set rate to achieve that.
Which is no different than a bank would. A bank gets money at a certain percentage, and then they loan it out. A bank gets money at a certain percentage and then they loan it out at a higher percentage because they do that, as Mr. Roloff said, they have to assume the risk.
And currently, most banks in Oshkosh for an unsecured loan right now charges nine to nine and three-quarters points.
The city used to charge, was it nine percent, Dave? It was nine percent. And council, by their policy, had knocked it back to six percent because they recognize, as you have, that the interest rate is higher than what you can get on the market. But there is an element of risk that we have to manage, and we lowered it to six percent in recognition that the nine percent just was from a different time when the interest rates were much higher. Council may have to revisit that at some point in the future, but right now, I wouldn't recommend that.
I think also, the council does consider that. In fact, last year, we reviewed that whole policy and went back and forth. These are comments that we hear periodically. This is not unique to Bowen Street. There are people with hardships throughout, also those who are paying the taxes to pay the ninety percent have the same issues and say we shouldn't have as much tax. So, there's some of those issues. But the council has reviewed it. Probably every few years, I've been on the council now for almost eleven years, and I've done at least three or four times, had special sessions on reviewing what the rates been. It's been taken down a couple of times, and the council last year decided not to alter the rate. So, the council does talk about it, does consider it periodically, not every week, not every time somebody comes in and shows up. The council has taken a look at it, will continue to do so in deference to what felt would be the best interest overall for all the taxpayers in the city of Oshkosh. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Edith Barron Camp. I'm from thirteen oh seven Bowen Street. One of the concerns I have is the sidewalks. Not so much the street, but the street, I couldn't see why we had to do the street when there's so many streets in a town that needs to be done. We take the guy home from church every Thursday night and remember the street he's on. But we can't even go down his street because it's so bad. We have to leave him off at a corner because he said, please don't go down, you're going to ruin your car. And even though, I guess I brought up to Herman Sunday night, and I'm sorry, I yelled at him pretty bad because I was always told that Bowen is a highway. Bowen, he says it's not, it's a truck route. Can we do something, number one, for the way traffic from five o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night, people are flying through that road? And I can't see why, if it's not a highway, to me, it's a highway. I'm awake every morning at five o'clock in the morning. So is my husband. He sits up, has to get up and watch the news. You know how much that bothers me? It bothers me. But I want, I would like, I don't know what, do we have to take responsibility for calling the police or can you somehow or another, we're paying for the road to come in, we're paying for the sidewalk? I was also told, when you put the sidewalk in, now you don't have to worry about what's coming out because if it wasn't damaged to begin with, you don't have to pay for it just for the section that you needed to get fixed. The section that's in your driveway before, the one that they took out, before you, after you hit the sidewalk, it's going up our driveway, took out a great big slab there, that was practically brand-new. They took that out. He said, you don't have to pay for this, don't worry about it. This is the city worker now. That told us this. And he said, and any of the other sidewalks that they take out, you don't have to pay. But yet, our bill is over a thousand dollars and something, almost two thousand dollars just for sidewalk. So, I can't understand that either. I know what they have to take up for the power lines, I guess, and through the pipes, and it is a good thing. I'm glad for everything that's going through, but it's really hard for the seniors, like some of them have said, and the low-income people. We have a young girl that works nights, I'm sure she's not here. She broke down and cried, she lost her mother, and she's raising her younger sister. And finally, just got her a job. She doesn't know how she's going to make payments. She thinks she has to sell. She needs a new roof on her house that I am terrified for. If I didn't have this, I think my husband and I might even help her out a little bit, but we can't now. So, that's all I say, but I had to let that out. But I am concerned about what we're paying for the sidewalk. And if this guy is on the level with us, or are we paying for all of the sidewalk that's ripped up for the piping going through?
You said the ones that need to be replaced will be the only ones you have to pay for.
That's the only ones we would have to pay. Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, just a point out, ma'am. Chief Grail's in the back, so I'm sure he heard your concerns about the speeding on Bowen Street, and I'm sure he'll address that for you. The chief's in the back of the room. One comment, I know we're getting off task a little bit with this, but there was a couple comments about, you know, did the street really need to be done as far as the infrastructure? And I just remember from our workshops tonight, I'd like to have Mr. Pottek or Mr. Godey. We have a, you know, as I tried to explain to the citizens on Sunday night, we try to turn the streets upside down. It's like a roadmap. And yes, as one gentleman said, they don't have any flooding in the area. But to address our overall infrastructure in the city and the overall flooding issues in the city, there are certain streets that are priority streets that have to have certain type of storm sewers and sanitary sewers and things like that. Isn't that correct, Mr. Pottek? And we do it as kind of a roadmap and priorities a roadmap so that overall, we improve the total infrastructure of the city?
You're correct. We look, and I think the city manager also indicated, we try to look at it all-encompassing. And the reason we started looking at this section of Bowen Street was because of problems with the sanitary sewer.
Okay. So, we have a plan in place. It's not that, it's just a hodgepodge in a sense and things like that. It's actually planned out so that overall, our infrastructure's being improved to improve the total handling of, like last night's rain, things like that, that we had to control our flooding in the city. Correct?
It's, you're touching on many subjects.
Yeah, I know I am.
We fix sanitary sewers, we fix water mains, we fix storm sewers. But you have an interesting point. With the amount of rain that we've had in the last three weeks, I think the improvements that we put in since the stormwater utility started show the benefits of doing that sort of comprehensive infrastructure improvement.
And the reason, and I explain this to the citizens, so the reason we have an engineer on site is to make sure that when we bill out that those sidewalks they're talking about, the aprons they're concerned about, those things are all being checked by him to make sure that proper billing will be done. That's why we put an engineer on location.
We have inspectors, and actually, when the DNR gives us approval to replace water main and to replace sanitary sewers, they have a requirement that we have inspectors. And so, it's just our policy to inspect everything, not just utilities, inspect the sidewalk, the paving and everything.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I see no one else coming forward, so I'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of a number of items that are viewed to be non... If anybody else would like to speak, I'd appreciate if they get in line so we can...
I'm Mike Jones, I live at fourteen oh five Bowen Street, and I have two questions. First one was, if we can't get a loan to pay off the ten thousand dollars, are we going to get penalized or fined for not paying it off right away?
I would encourage you to meet with staff to talk about specific instances. You're probably not going to get your first bill, depending on what option you select in terms of payment plan. If you select a fifteen-year payment plan, which based on your number, Dave, with an assessment of nine thousand dollars, that would probably be a fifteen-year payment, if I'm not mistaken, that's allowed. So, over fifteen years, so that ten thousand dollars would be spent, spread over a fifteen-year period. So, each individual assessment has, it's based on what the size of your assessment is. That's what I would encourage you to come and talk to the Public Works Department to find out what your payment might be depending on what your current assessment estimate is. I would encourage you to do that.
My next question was, what do they do with all that asphalt and the concrete that they're taking out of the road and the sidewalks? Do they bring it in, recycle it, reuse it again somewhere else? Because if they are, then I want to get that concrete and asphalt back, I'll sell it to the city or whoever has it, and I'll get some money back from that way.
Well, unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. The sidewalk is in the public right of way, and so it's part of the street infrastructure. And so, as part of the bid, the contractor will remove it. And I'm sure he works out his purchasing agreements with the aggregate supplier. It used to be Vulcan, now it's Michaels. But their policy was they would take material such as old asphalt, old concrete, as long as the contractor was buying their stone. So, that's how the contractor has to dispose of that material, and they typically work with the quarries to dispose of it so that those quarries then recycle it.
So, they're actually, if I own up to the middle of the road, so they're actually taking off my...
You don't own to the middle of the road. You own to the sidewalk side of the house side of the sidewalk. That's what you...
Then we should have to pay them a little bit.
Well, we can have, that's the policy of the special assessments for the city. That's, requires that people pay for, for street improvements.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Then we'll go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of a number of items that are viewed to be non-controversial in nature. They'll be taken up as a group by the council. And what will happen if either a citizen or a council member wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, all they have to do is ask that that item be removed, we'll remove it from the consent agenda, and we'll take it up as separate consideration. What I'm going to do, first of all, I'm going to read through all the items. If there's a particular item that is of interest to you, please come up to the microphone and talk about that item at that point in time. Once we've gone through all the items, I'll bring it back to the council for questions and discussion, and then we'll get a motion in a second and look at approval. Okay, I'll start reading through. Approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, Jennifer Dunham, for alleged damage from a sewer backup. Resolution fourteen dash two seven two, award bid for commercial four WD compact tractor for water filtration plant and resistor, Schnell, Inc. Resolution fourteen dash two seven through, award bid for public works contract number fourteen dash two zero to Carl Bowers and Son Construction Company for storm sewer laterals, various locations. Resolution fourteen dash two seven four, approved purchase of road salt for winter two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen for the Department of Public Works through WIDOT from Cargill, Inc. Resolution fourteen dash two seven five, approve releasing utility estimates twenty-three-hundred block Wisconsin Street. Resolution fourteen dash two seven six, approve and submit two thousand thirteen Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, wastewater treatment Resolution fourteen dash two seven seven, a resolution determining to issue eight million three hundred thousand aggregate principal amount of stormwater utility revenue bond, series two thousand fourteen A of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, in such amount providing details prescribing the form of bond, awarding the bonds to the best bidder, and providing for the payment of said bonds and covenants with respect thereto. Resolution fourteen dash two seven eight, authorized borrowing from state trust fund loan to finance WRS prior service pension liability. Resolution fourteen dash two seven nine, accept financial donation and truck wrap from Oshkosh Area Community Foundation for mobile command vehicle for Oshkosh Police Department. Resolution fourteen dash two eight zero, rescind personal property taxes, cemetery surplus and serve city. Resolution fourteen dash two eight one, approve temporary polling place for August twelfth, two thousand fourteen election. District five, Trinity Evangelica Lutheran School, eight nineteen Bowen Street. Resolution fourteen dash two eight two, approval of special event, and these, the next several will be all special events. I won't say special event each time. Life promotions to utilize Winnebago County Fairgrounds for their life fest July ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight three, Most Blessed Sacrament Catholic Parish to hold the Most Blessed Sacrament Parish picnic, July eleven, twelve, and thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight four, Catamaran Racing Association, Wisconsin, to utilize Menominee Park for their Crazy Cats Catamaran Regatta, July twelve and thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight five, the Grand Opera House to utilize Grand Opera House and parking lot for the Grand Scoop, July nineteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight six, Elizabeth Barron to utilize Menominee Park for the Barron-Jeffson Wedding Ceremony, August nine, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight seven, Andrews University Center for Youth Evangelism to utilize EAA ground for the Faith on Fire International Pathfinder Jamboree, August eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight eight, Forever Faithful Pathfinder Jamboree in Seventh Day Adventist Church to utilize city streets, Menominee Park and Leach Amphitheater for the Forever Faithful Pathfinder Parade, August sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two eight nine, Winnebago County Heron Task Force to utilize city streets for the Rethink Addiction Run, September thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two nine zero, Reach Counseling Services to utilize city streets for their Fox Valley Take Back the Night, October eight, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two nine one, approval of block party request Kincaid Avenue between Greenfield Trail and Heritage Trail, August five, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two nine two, approval of block party request Fifth Avenue between Nap Street and Idaho Street, August five, two thousand fourteen. Resolution fourteen dash two nine three, approve appointments to the following boards and commissions, library board, bicycle and pedestrian advisory board, committee on aging, bid board, and housing authority. Resolution fourteen dash two nine four, disallowance of claim by Dave and Ruland, Redland. Resolution fourteen dash two nine five, approve combination Class B licenses, Class B fermented malt license, operator licenses, and taxi cab license. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for questions or discussions on any items and identification of any items you'd like removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove resolution fourteen two ninety for separate consideration because I will be voting present on that due to a relationship I have with one of the sponsors of that event.
Resolution fourteen dash two ninety has been removed for separate consideration.
All right. And then related to resolution fourteen two seventy-eight, authorized borrowing from the state trust fund loan, the City of Oshkosh has an unfunded pension liability that stands at approximately ten point five million dollars at this point. What we are doing is, is we have the opportunity to borrow that money from the state trust fund to pay off the one debt, and granted, we're taking out another debt. However, the unfunded pension liability, we are currently making payments on this. We will continue to make payments on this over the next twenty years. Over the next twenty years, those payments will be about fourteen point four million dollars. At the end of that period, we will still owe sixteen million dollars on this unfunded pension liability. That's option A. Option B is what we're discussing tonight, and that's taking out this ten million four hundred thousand dollar loan to pay off that other debt. We'll be paying about fifteen point nine million dollars on that. Now, that is a difference between fourteen point four and fifteen point nine. However, at the end of spending that fifteen point nine million dollars, we have zero added liability. So, while it is taking one debt, paying it off with another debt, in the long-term financial interests of the city, this refunding of this unfunded pension liability is in the best interests of the city. Everybody kind of clear with that? Anybody have any questions related to that? So, what?
Well, no, I actually, I had a question from Mr. Roloff, though, but it's related to two seventy-eight. It's not related to your math, that was well-spoken there, well-professed.
And just, if I may, this unfunded pension liability has been noted by our bond rating agency, Moody's, and by shifting it over to the refunding that we're doing... agency, Moody's, and by shifting it over to the refunding that we're doing, Moody's will still be, understand it, but the thing is, they're also looking for, we also get a couple of brownie points from Moody's by addressing an unfunded liability that they were concerned with. So, long-term, it's to the benefit of the city. Short-term, it will give us some additional help when Moody's looks at our bond rating. Mr. Fitzgerald, I'm done with that one.
Are you?
I'm done.
Okay.
I did have a question for you, Mr. Roloff, on 278. And this unfunded liability came as a result of the retirement system, a number of years back, doing a reassessment of its fiscal standing and determining that every contributor into the system needed to pay a certain bulk sum to kind of bring it up to the standards where it was going to meet the demands of retirees years and years out. How often does the state retirement system do that? I mean, is it a regular occurrence, every 10 years, every 20 years?
This is not about current employees or fixing current employees. This, I don't have the exact date, but this dates back to when the city stopped doing its own retirement system. In the past, in the history, was that cities ran their own retirement systems. The state took that responsibility over many years ago. I'm going to say 40, 50 years ago that they took it over. And so this was a liability that existed for every community that didn't have enough in their retirement fund at the time. So they turned all their assets over to the state. The state calculated and said, how much are you short based on your current employees at the time we switched over? And the state calculated a little charge that they would add on to every employee to help pay that off over the years, and over time, you would have this paid off. And after many years, that liability was not reduced. It actually was increased. And that, a lot of cities have gone through this. Many cities have already paid off this debt. We're finally doing that because the, as Mr. Peck pointed out, if we don't, the state is not charging us enough, and it's a loan that we're not even digging into the principal, and the principal keeps increasing because the interest we're paying on it isn't enough to pay off the current interest rate. We are paying regularly every current employee. This really goes back years and years. And in order for us to keep this debt from growing, we really just need to get it paid off with a sunset in mind. Now, we'll have a sunset date in mind, because that's what the state trust fund loan does. Is it something maybe we should have done 10, 15 years ago? Yes, I would say so, and we're only doing it now. But to defer it any longer is really just going to stretch that liability out for many more years. But Mr. Herman, before the meeting, asked me, is this about current employees? And I think that was your question, too. This is not about current employees. These are employees who probably retired many, many years ago, and in some cases, these employees are deceased. But they had a liability that the state assumed when they took over the entire retirement system, and we have not made enough payments to pay it off. And so, over time, it's just grown, and this will retire it and sunset it on a date certain. So it's a much better way to do it.
Thank you.
Clarification helpful to you?
That clears it up.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a concern with Resolution 14-272. I know Steve is here. I was just asking for a little bit more clarification on the need for this particular purchase.
Okay. When, we currently have two units, and they're essentially yard tractors that we use for, they're smaller version, they're typical homeowner size. We use that for both, all the mowing, the water plant site, tower sites, and we also have snow blowers on those that we use in the wintertime. When we remove the old water filtration plant buildings, we have been experiencing some extreme drifting and issues around the site that we just can't move around with our trucks with front plows on them. And the blowers on these units are small enough that we can't move drifts with them either. And the other issue we have is gets over to the sidewalk on the south side on Washington. So when the plant manager, Brad Rokus, and I got together and sat down, we said, what's the next best size of equipment we can find that has a loader attachment to it, so we can actually move that snow in those drifted areas by that south entrance and be able to keep that area clear? Something with a larger blower that can help us blow snow around the areas where our chemical supply trucks move in and help us better manage snow on the site. And so, though this has a mower deck with it, and we'll be using it to replace one of the two smaller tractors we have, this will also really primarily help us with moving snow around on the site and being able to maintain that site, keep the gates open, and help us with do better snow management on it. So this is called a subcompact tractor. It's only the next size larger from the tractors we have, and so that was the one that we put in our operating budget for purchase for this year that was approved with the last operating budget.
And Brad informed me that this would, you're currently using two men to do this?
Correct. Well, certainly for the grass removal and stuff like that, I don't know, depending on snow, how much rain we have, how many times we have to mow. I really, you know, Brad, as soon as we can reduce some hours possibly in doing that-
And down to one person now doing this? Or you still have-
It's, it's-
Depending on-
It's going to depend. It really is. And so, this hopefully will help us be more efficient and spend less time moving snow. But really, the key is to be able to get those drifts and stuff out of the site so that we have access to all the roads, all the gates and things like that. So, I don't know, I don't want to give you the impression that we're going one size larger and that we can do it faster and do it more efficiently. That's our hope, we can. But really, this is for, to help us out with our snow removal and moving those drifts around in the wintertime.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the added information. I appreciate it.
All right.
Other questions, Collins?
Mr. Mayor, 14-277, Ms. Larson, and if you would come forward with the bond counsel from Ellers, just to review that.
Todd Taves is our financial advisor with Ellers Associates, and he was one to put together the bid documents for today's bid opening for the storm water utility revenue bond.
And while we're waiting for them to come up to the date, I failed to mention that as far as Resolution 14-278, the Long Range Finance Committee recommends passage of, recommends the refunding of the pension liability.
Sure.
Stage is yours.
I'll talk about the results today quickly. You did receive three bids. The winning bid was Jeffries LLC out of New York with a true interest rate of 3.47. The, you've noticed the 8.3 million reduction that was due to a bond premium that you received, meaning the winning bidder paid greater than the face value. We use those dollars and reduce the size, you went up to the same amount for projects, but issue less bonds. And your total P and I will be about 376,000 less than the pre-sale estimate. And so overall, good positive results for the city.
Heck, anything else?
Nope, I just wanted them to come up and explain it for the rest of the council.
Good. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any items? Then I'll ask for a motion on the consent agenda minus Resolution 14-290.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda minus Resolution 14-290? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask the clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution for the consent agenda minus 14-290.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to items removed from the consent agenda. There was one item, Resolution 14-290, had to do with a special event, Reach Counseling Services to utilize city streets for their Fox Valley Take Back the Night, October 8, 2014. We've already had public comment time, so I'd ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ask clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-290.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Present.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Okay, we have a laid over ordinance from prior meeting. Ordinance 14-296, approved request to attach to the city from town of Blackwuff, Pertle voluntary attachment southeast corner of Ripple Road and Oregon Street. Anybody like to speak to that? Okay, seeing no one coming forward to speak to that, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Are we really to the point with this one where we can take action on this?
No, we brought this back because I was on the agenda, it was listed. We said to bring it back at this date certain. Staff report that Public Works provided is asking that we defer it until such time we have some of these sewer issues resolved. They are not resolved, and instead of having it come back at a date certain, we'd ask you to give staff the direction to bring it back when the time's appropriate. This was not initiated by council. This was initiated by staff. And so rather than keeping it back and you deferring it, we'll bring it back at a time appropriate. We need to work out some issues with our consultants that are analyzing this entire area before we bring it back.
I'd ask for a motion.
I would make a motion to lay this over time indefinite and to give staff the opportunity to dot the i's, cross the t's.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on laying over ordinance 14-296 to an indefinite date, until staff is ready to bring it back.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, it takes us to pending ordinances. Ordinance 14-297, approved request to annex the city, pack our annexation vacant lot north of 3555 Moser Street. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one coming forward to speak to that, I'll bring it back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on ordinance 14-297. Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-297.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Takes us to ordinance 14-298, approved request to attach to the city from town of Algoma, Daniela voluntary delayed attachment, 1535 South Oakwood Road. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-298.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances. New ordinances require two readings. This will be the first reading tonight, so I'll read it if anybody would like to comment on it. They can comment on it tonight. If you do not to comment on it tonight, they can comment on it at the next meeting when it'll be taken up for a vote regarding approval. So it's ordinance 14-299, approval of striped bicycle lanes on both sides of Sawyer Street from Fifth Avenue to Fillmore Avenue, on east side to Buchanan Avenue on the west side. Parking regulation changes on Sawyer Street related to bicycle lanes and a speed limit change on Murdoch Avenue east of Bowen Street. Anybody might come forward to speak to that? Okay, once again, this will not be taken up for a vote tonight, so if somebody decides they want to talk about that, they can talk about it at the next council meeting before the vote. No need to bring it back to the council. So I'll move on to new resolutions. New resolutions, Resolution 14-300, approve annual city licenses renewals. Anybody like to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second on Resolution 14-300.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-300.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, the next one is Resolution 14-301, approve policy for inactive alcohol beverage licenses. This is something that the council asked for, and basically it says it will review a license, not just every June, to see if places have been shut down for a year, but any time a place has been inoperative for a year, at that time, we will review it. Also, as a part of that policy, the other part of the policy is, is people will be given 30-day notice, 30 days ahead of time, which you think is appropriate, so the clerk will send out a notice to remind people in case they forget it. Those are the, really, the only two changes. If anybody would like to come forward to speak to that, feel free, come forward. Okay, if no one's coming forward, and I see no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one question.
Mr. Cummings and Mr. Herman.
This is, I believe, for the city clerk. Will license holders be notified of this change in policy within days of today, tonight?
Yes, we have the envelopes ready to go. They will be mailed tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Miss efficiency. Mr. Herman?
I just want to make a comment. I think it's important policy that we move forward with, you know, I always read Mr. Bowyer's comments in the Sunday paper, and he noticed an establishment already closed since we've already approved the license. So I think it is important that we stay on top of this, even though we have, I think, four or five licenses now available. I think it is important, because it goes with, you know, the balance, again, of a business being closed, and if they're not running it, are they maintaining it, are they not taking care of it? And it becomes an eyesore. And so if we can stay on top of it and send out those notifications that they're on the clock, more or less, maybe that'll help them get it up, you know, get it back up and running, or try to get it up for sale or something like that sooner than later. We don't have all these issues late in the renewal of the licenses. So I'll be supporting this change.
Others? Any comments? Seeing none, ask clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-301.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. Future agenda items. First of all, a joint workshop with common council, plan commission, redevelopment authority, July 1st, immediately following plan commission meeting, approximately 5:30. I think people were informed by email that this would be coming up. I believe this is, we'll get some report on a report that was done by university group regarding, this is going to be the-
Business Success Center.
Huh?
The Business Success Center.
The Business Success Center, but this is going to have to do with some ideas for possible feasibility ideas for the Pioneer Property, so another part of our effort on the Pioneer Property. So if people could make it, that would be fantastic. I know some people may not be able to make it, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I will not be there. I will be out of town starting June 30th and will not be back until July 6th. So if I could get a copy of whatever studies are going to be given out at that meeting, if they could be included in council package, I would appreciate it.
We'll get them out beforehand.
And I just want to make a comment on it. I think holding workshops around holidays and things is kind of poor planning, and I think that this one should have been noticed a lot sooner than through an email. So I'll just voice my displeasure of a workshop around the holidays.
Hopefully made.
I have the same dilemma with not being able to attend, that I'm going to be out of town that week as well.
You die as well.
So at most, there will be four, depending on how the day evolves. At least some council members will be there, so.
Understood.
Okay, strategic planning workshop, this one we all know about on July 9th, from 9 to 5 at the UWO Welcome Center. The location has been identified. We got notice this week, so that will be all day on July 9th. So it'll be important, important event for us. important event for us. I think the last time we did the strategic planning, I think we did it right, we had, had a lot of help with it, we got a lot done that day, so everybody comes prepared to work. Everybody has been sent, uh, emailed, uh, survey, and hopefully people can get those done, I think they'd like them done by the end of the week, is that right?
Preferably yes.
The end of the week. Um, so if you have a, that opportunity to do it, it's kind of a fill in the blank, it says forty or forty-five minutes, you can probably do it twenty to thirty minutes. So, if we can get it done, that information from there will be used as input, so, um, I think it's going to be helpful, the more people that, that do reply to that. Okay, and then a budget workshop on July twenty-third, Wednesday at five PM, uh, that is a change in date from the original thing, we made mention of it last time, originally, I think the original date was the twenty-second, is originally put on there, so it, it's not the twenty-second, it's the twenty-third, twenty-second, I think we got a council meeting next month. Oh, okay, uh, anything else? We have direction of city manager, uh, this point, actually, there are a couple of other items people have asked me about. Okay, mid-year review for the city manager, that was added, I'm not sure who added it, I didn't get a name after it.
That would be-
Allison Osby?
That would be me.
That would be appropriate.
Actually, um, both items, D and E, uh, were requested by me to be added on. With, um, the mid-year review for the city manager, it's something that hasn't been done in the past, um, the city manager is the one employee that we have, uh, certainly there's a number of things, and at my time, at least on council, is, you know, certainly we've added more and more to the city manager's plate, and I just thought it would be beneficial to give some type of feedback to Mr. Roloff, so that we can ensure that he finishes out the year strong, and that, you know, if there's any questions or any, uh, direction that's changed since when we spoke to him in December, um, that we have an opportunity to do that and give him the best opportunity, again, to finish the year strong and to be successful.
Do you have a recommended, uh, process and timing for this? Because I think that-
Yep, um, what I was gonna-
It would be important to recommend it, so then people could see whether or not they agree. The deputy mayor does have the responsibility for leading the process at that particular point in time, of the city manager at any point in time, so.
Yep, there would be a form that would go out to, uh, obvious, all, all seven of us, uh, for some feedback, and hopefully perhaps, uh, that council meeting may be at the end of July, we could go into closed session, we could certainly, uh, meet with Mark at that time, and then, as I said, you know, if there's anything that we want to address, um, and certainly obviously give him, uh, feedback, certainly on, on what we think is going well the first half of the year.
So you'd be sending out a questionnaire, having it sent back to, I assume, you or to a place, and we'll get that instruction from you?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm all for it.
I'm a folk, we, we had talked about that possibility, Allison Osby's been talking about it for some time, so I think it's a good idea. Okay, so we'll see if we get that out, and if it works for the, the timing, or if you have to change the timing, let us know.
Okay.
Okay. And, uh, what about the follow-up, the sexual offender workshop, was that your item also?
That was my item, uh, also, uh, you know, in regards to the sexual, sexual offender workshop that we had, I think the information we got was, was very good. I think the only challenge that we had is there, there really wasn't adequate time, um, and for me, does there need to be a change? I don't know, perhaps, perhaps not, but I certainly got quite a bit of feedback, um, and not just from a single portion in town, but a number of questions, and I think the information was good, um, I learned a lot, obviously, it, in my opinion, was agenda-driven by the guests that were there. I would like to see at some point have us have a discussion, but really where it's council and staff. Um, we really are the best, I think, judge of what needs to go on in our community, and maybe as things are, um, as they stand right now, maybe sufficient and, and maybe not, but I think, um, you know, when, when I look back on it, I think there was maybe two or three questions that were addressed, and we were simply out of time. So I, my question to the rest of council is, would anybody else like to talk about this within the next couple of months, um, to be able to air our concerns, ask the questions, and have it be where it really truly is between council and staff?
In essence, it has to be a workshop, so.
I'd support it.
Mr. Cummings?
I would support it, uh, we held a similar session a year ago with, uh, the neighbors from Middle Village, and some of the same people we heard from the state, and we heard pretty much the same comments, that the procedures they follow for placing people in neighborhoods, and I think there are things that we do need to do as a community. Other communities have taken action to, uh, for lack of a better term, I think, share the wealth, I mean, the, the concern has been amongst neighborhoods that certain neighbors in the city have become the dumping ground, for lack of a better term, and I think we have to find a better way to take the burden off of certain neighborhoods.
Others, terms of doing it, having a workshop?
I would support that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Cummings?
I had a discussion with, um, probation supervisor Todd Tim about it, um, I, I agree, I think we need more information, but I also think we need to hear more of their information before we can make a decision, they, you know, they crammed a two-hour presentation into forty-five minutes, and I don't think that's enough information for even council to start discussing whether we should have an ordinance or, uh, policies or procedures. Um, what I discussed with him, and actually I think I discussed with Chief Groyle, was to actually do three or four community-wide presentations, hopefully council can make one of them, or all of them, and hear from the citizens too. I mean, if we're going to change an ordinance to where people can live and can't live, maybe, or if we aren't going to do an ordinance, or just the concerns, I think we need to hear from, from the citizens too. Um, you know, it did come up in one of the neighborhood associations of concerns, but are there other areas of the city, um, that citizens are concerned about? So I think if we, um, before we have our discussion, I'd like to hear the full presentation, which is about a two hours, I believe, Mr. Cummings, right? About two hour and a half?
It's not, it's not quite that long.
Okay, but, you know, I think if, uh, I think before we make any major decisions one way, the other, um, maybe we should take it out in the community and let the community hear the presentation too, and then as we get feedback from citizens, because that was what kind of drove it from my end, was the email, uh, the gentleman sent to me concerned about the, um, placement of a sex offender in the neighborhood. So I think we, uh, we, it would be wise for all of us to, um, um, you know, I, I agree, it was a driven agenda on their end, uh, because they don't support it, an ordinance that limits to where sex offenders can live in that, but, um, and they have their reasons for it, but I think that if we get that information out to our citizens, we'll also be relieving some of their fears, some of their concerns about those issues, and it may be well attended, it may very well not be well attended, but I just wanted to throw that idea out there, that, um, they would be willing to, um, do some public presentations, and, and, um, I think it'd be great if we, if we thought that was a good idea to do one on the north side, one on the east side, west and south, so that we really cover the, the city in its entirety.
Let me, let me explain the reason that the one on the middle of Village started was, the neighbors, the neighbors' concern about the investment they're making in, uh, changing their neighborhood, and the comment that came out from the neighbors is the, the impact it has on property values. And I can speak to that from, you know, my background in the real estate business and people I've talked to in office, in our office, that it, it makes the value of a property next to a, a structure that's housing sex offenders down, and makes it almost impossible to sell. So I think that's an issue, that we, we're concerned about the, the value of our neighborhoods, it, it has a tremendous impact on the value of a neighborhood.
Okay, there are a couple things here, we're, before we get into debating the issue, the first is, Mr., there's been a suggestion that we have a workshop just with staff, that was one suggested, and another is, before we do that, Mr. Herman suggested that there might be some presentations, I'm not sure four is, is totally feasible, particularly if the objective is for council members to hear, I don't think four, four, four sessions out there with council members being expected to attend, and then a workshop afterwards is going to, going to fly very far, um, in terms of attendance, but maybe there could be a couple, so, others' ideas? Peck?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, I, I would suggest, there, there are two fifth Tuesdays coming up, one is July, is twenty-nine July, and one is thirty September. Uh, I would think that a fifth Tuesday, um, beginning at six o'clock in this room, uh, we have plenty of space here, uh, I think if we would set it up for, uh, thirty September, that gives us a couple of months to publicize it, uh, and to, to get the word out for anyone that's interested in it, we could do the presentation, as Mr. Herman has said, I know it's going to be a, a long, it could be a long night, but, you know, that's why we stepped to the plate to do this, but, uh, you know, we could do a workshop, we could have the presentation and then do a council, you know, take some public comment, and then we could go in and do a workshop on our own, uh, after that, or we could schedule a workshop after that point, but I would, it, it would allow us to, you know, get the public input and go from there, so I, I would suggest one of those fifth Tuesdays. Uh, the only reason why I would suggest, uh, thirty September is, is, um, you know, even though we're at the end of, we're at the end of, uh, June right now, I don't know if we could get the word out, so to speak, in a month.
Other people's thoughts? When I hear Mr. Herman was talking about having sessions in different parts of town, uh, I'm just concerned about how many sessions there are, Mr. Peck's idea to have one on a fifth Tuesday, and have it here, and let all people come in here.
Going back to my comment though, I wasn't expecting council to attend all four of those workshops, I was just kind of using that as they could attend one of those workshops. The, I agree with Mr. Peck, I think that would work also, to do a, a community-wide presentation, uh, with council, and then go into closed session. We are committed on the twenty ninth a little bit, uh, that's the Oshkosh Giants Community Night that we've been invited to be at, so.
Then let's go September thirtieth.
Uh, September thirtieth is plenty of time to get it out there, I'm sure we could-
We'll have to ask the questions, we had to make sure people would be available to, to do the presentation, or at least most, because in essence, we'd be talking about similar presentation that was done to the council, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Similar presentation, do it here?
Have it, have it wide open.
Make sense, do one session, the thirtieth, I don't know that we'd want to schedule for, um, closed session, and come out of a, what could be some, a heated meeting and go into session, for any, for any reason, but we have a, another workshop at a later date, we could identify a workshop in which we'd discuss the things that came out of that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think when we have it, I, I, I think to Councilor Peck's, uh, point, you know, it does need to be noticed, I mean, this is a concern, it's not just, you know, I'm not getting comments just from, you know, the, the east side or the north side, I mean, it's, it's coming from all over, and what I want to make clear is, it's, it's not because, you know, I'm pro ordinance or anti ordinance, I just think there's not a lot of information out there, and I think, you know, we have to be cognizant, we can't just sweep the issue under the carpet, um, you know, we all have to take our fair share of responsibility, but I think there's also some things, when I look at it, that don't make a lot of sense, and, you know, if, if you were to pick, you know, say, Middle Village, okay, so we've, we've made an investment as a city into Middle Village, but yet then within Middle Village, you know, we have rentals in which house sex offenders, so, you know, in some ways it's almost counterproductive, so, you know, I think we just have to have a plan, what's the best course of action, what is that plan? I don't know, um, you know, and, but I think we, we have to take a serious look at it, um, we have a number of things that occur in the city of Oshkosh, and part of it is because we have phenomenal services, transportation, and, and so on and so forth, but it also sometimes brings about some challenges that, um, you know, do create some issues with our citizens, and we have to make sure we're addressing them, so that's, you know, what the, what the point of it is, um, you know, I, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to, to Chief Groyle yet, and I hope to do that, um, you know, obviously he feels a certain way, and, and I certainly understand how he feels, I certainly recognize that, um, and I think that is important, but I think it's also all encompassing, so.
Okay, I think we're talking about pretty much process, we can get the substance there for the, the discussion afterwards, so I think we're looking if we can shoot for the thirtieth, see if those parties can be there, have a public session here in the council chamber, and then afterwards schedule a workshop to discuss the issues that come out of it. I don't think we'd be well served by having a meeting after the meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that okay? I mean, is that, is that a way off? Mr. Herman?
Yeah, that's fine.
We have some time to work this out, figure out, get some input on what types of things we might want to have there, so we'll work on it, we'll target the September thirtieth date, six PM, and we'll work on potential agenda attendees and things like that, or in the coming months.
Then we'll talk about it at some point, having the council get together, we'll be right in the middle of, that's going to come out, right in the middle of budget season, so we'll be meeting on a couple meetings a week at that point, so, so we'll have to figure that, those dates out, plus we'll be doing the city manager's evaluation process during that period of time, so. Okay, uh, anything else on the sexual offender workshop idea? Seeing none, Mr. Cummings had a, had a issue he wanted to raise here.
I did, uh, thank you Mayor Tower, uh, I don't know if everyone has received something like this in the mail.
Within the last couple days.
Last couple days, I received this at my home today, it looks very official, um, and I've talked to some other people who received it, what it is, it's addressed to Oshkosh homeowner, and what it is, it is doing is trying to sell people insurance for water service line coverage. Um, I talked to one individual who thought the city senate, sent it, I said, no, you don't need it, throw it away, uh, so just, if you should receive this-
I want to put it on the screen.
Oh, is that better?
Yeah.
If you should receive it, uh, discard it, do not send the money. Mr. Park, would you like to explain why you don't need this insurance?
Sure, the, um, it's a, it's a private company that, as, uh, council member Cummings indicated, is trying to provide a product.
Turn it the other way, Steve.
We, we, uh-
Well, that was good, no, you had it right the first time, sorry.
Right, right.
We, uh, we get calls from residents asking about this sort of information that gets sent to them, and, uh, we always recommend that they talk to their own insurance agent about this sort of thing. We are not involved as far as the city utility with this, uh, private company trying to sell this product.
Okay, anybody else, Kevin? I did, I know, anybody else?
Yeah, I got one today.
Okay, they're, they're purely coming up, and this is actually the second series of these, this year, we had a series earlier in the air court. One of them came after the winter when all the damage was done to the water line, so, so, I fear. Okay, citizen statements to the council, another opportunity, if people want to come up and speak to the council at this particular point in time about some concern they may have, or something that they see as positive, like to make those statements, so the microphone is open, anybody like to come forward at this point in time?
Again, my name is Tim Finley, um, I just wanted to say thank you, I realize the work that you guys do, and I realize that it's just a little bit more than volunteer work, so, um, I do recognize that, and I appreciate the effort that you ladies and gentlemen put in, uh, for the council. Uh, I do want to reiterate, um, a statement that I sort of alluded to before, which is taking up some sort of a hardship consideration, um, for the people on my street, I do know, um, not just for the people on my street, I'm sorry, for the city of Oshkosh, residents that do face financial hardships and live on limited budgets, and then get faced with, um, assessments like the ones that are happening on Bowen Street and other areas of the community. I recognize the response, which is that the city doesn't want to be in the banking business, I get that, but there's a critical difference between the bank and what the city does, which is that the bank doesn't show up at your house and assess you seven thousand dollars and say you need to pay it. Um, there's, um, it's just a little bit of discrepancy between the city issuing bonds at three percent and then issuing this loan at six percent, so the city is really profiting off of people who really don't have money to spend, uh, at least that's the way it appears, so, um, I would just, I would, uh, respectfully ask the board or council to consider some sort of a hardship arrangement for, um, the lower income citizens, I think you'll see a lot of goodwill that would come from that, um, I, I just think it's a fair thing to do, um, any response or any consideration?
Right at this point.
I would just, I would respectfully ask that you consider that once again.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate, appreciate your concern for that too, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, no one, I'll, uh, move on to city manager announcements and statements, Mr. Roloff.
Mr. Roloff, before you get started, could you, would you, uh, have any issue with Mr. Roloff, before you get started, could you, would you have any issue with moving thirty-seven before thirty-six?
Not at all.
And if it's, thirty-six last?
I can, I can move, I can.
Thank you very much.
Just a handful of items. Item thirty-four, Bowman Park Playground Design and Installation. What we typically do is we, our Parks Department works with neighbors from the immediate area around a park to help them select the best package that is appropriate for the neighborhood. Lee Recreation was selected, their proposal was selected. Mr. Maurer met with the residents in the Bowman Park area, and they assisted us in reviewing the proposals that were received, so just reporting that to council because it's in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. The next one, the professional services at the museum for the Tiffany exhibit, that was another one that, professional services that we awarded a contract to someone. This was for twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty. It was because we were the fortunate recipient of a GEM grant, which is a marketing grant that's offered by the Department of Tourism for the Tiffany exhibit that was at the museum. So those are those two things. With respect to item thirty-seven, July eighth, agenda preparation, as already been pointed out, the short week because of holidays next week, we're actually going to be putting the agenda together on Wednesday, July second, because of the short work week. So if you do have anything that you'd like to add to the agenda that goes out with the initial group, if you could get it to us by Monday, close of business Monday, that would help us get it on the draft agenda, because we, we're going to be printing it on Wednesday morning, Wednesday afternoon. Finally, with respect to item thirty-six, I know Mr. Peck wanted to excuse himself.
At this point, I will be excusing myself from the meeting as I am recusing myself from any discussion and consideration and voting on this particular agenda item, as it affects my employer, and also I am a stockholder in my personal account as well as my 401K for the, the applicant for this TIF. So at this point, I will be recusing myself and excusing myself from the meeting.
Okay. After all.
First off, I wanted to just give you a brief schedule for the review and consideration for TIF number twenty-seven. The Plan Commission took this issue up at their last meeting on June seventeenth, and this is scheduled to come to council at your meeting on July eighth. The school board designates their delegate to vote based on how the school board votes. The school board will be voting on this from their standpoint on July ninth, Wednesday. And then the Joint Review Board, assuming that both of those take place in the affirmative, the Joint Review Board is tentatively scheduled for July seventeenth, I believe, to consider that, which is a Thursday. That's the schedule. We, our goal is also to get you the development agreement for the grant itself for the Perfect Seal BMS Healthcare Packaging. That would also be on July eighth as well, and our goal is to get this to you as much in advance as possible, so you have it in advance of the meeting. With that, I know there were some questions that were raised at the Plan Commission meeting, and I had Mr. Pottek put a map on the screen that shows, Alan, if you want to kind of square that up a little bit. This is the map of the area, and roughly, the north is Snell Road where the shaded area is, and on the west side is Jackson, goes down to Fernow pretty much, and then over just east of Moser Street, or goes over to Moser, excuse me. That's the general area of the tax increment district. The council has approved an annexation for that property just immediately north of Packer, where Packer does own some property, and we had asked that, that be added to, to the TIF district, and they agreed to be an applicant for a, for an annexation. The idea here is, as we were looking at this for Perfect Seal, we recognized the need and the opportunity to address stormwater management issues in this area, which Public Works was already working on, on, on a much larger scale. The council at its previous meeting approved a contract to begin the process to review this watershed. We were going to be reviewing this watershed, whether this TIF came up or not. Well, we saw this is, was an opportunity to perhaps save some money in the stormwater utility by doing these exact same improvements that are needed in this area through the TIF district, at the same time utilizing a tool that we've used elsewhere in the city for our more recent tax increment districts. This tax increment district dates back to, I believe, the eighties, or it's, it's.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. It's, it's thirty years old. Back in those days, we did not have the same stormwater requirements that we do now. A lot of these properties are going to be in the same situation that Perfect Seal's in. If they want to expand, they're going to be very limited, if they can do any expansion at all, because they didn't factor in the need to have extra space for stormwater detention. Meanwhile, in our southwest industrial park, we've been very successful on building regional detention ponds, detention ponds, not just for the area for stormwater management, but for the individual properties, so that we can do a centralized stormwater management pond that will benefit all of the properties in there, so that they can expand as needed, and we will basically handle their stormwater needs. We felt that applying that same principle into this area was a great opportunity for us, because as properties want to develop out here, we might be curtailing their ability to do it with our stormwater requirements. So the idea, if you go back to that map just one more time, Andy, if, Alan, if you could point out, and these are potential pond areas, if you can move, move it up a little more, yeah, there you go. There's three potential areas for ponds. One immediately near Perfect Seal, pretty much across the street and just south, and then right outside the district, a couple of improvements that are there. The contract that the council approved a couple of weeks ago was to start that process to review and see exactly what we'll need. Our engineers have a pretty good idea about that, but we really need to get the due diligence done to ensure that these are the exact right areas. We feel that these are the right areas. We feel we'll be coming back to you that these are the right areas, but proposed for the TIF, that's what we've had. The mayor had asked a question about something that was raised at the Plan Commission meeting, and that had to do with a reference made to eight million dollars. If you take a look at the TIF plan, which has been provided to you, the TIF plan itself identifies upwards of eight million dollars in costs. Now, the Perfect Seal Pago TIF is only two million dollars of that. About four million dollars of that are potential utility improvements, primarily stormwater improvements, and then the financing costs as well as the administrative costs that go along with forming a TIF district. But the finance and interest costs are almost one-point-seven million dollars. So that'll go into getting paid off through the TIF. Anything we can use the TIF for will save our stormwater utility money. And as we just saw tonight with our bond award, we're always trying to find ways to, to stretch our utility dollars as much as we can. This TIF will enable us to do that, and we might be able to pay for it more with additional development. The only assumption we've made in here is that Perfect Seal will generate fifteen million dollars in value to that TIF. I don't believe we made any other assumptions. There are some.
One percent inflation growth.
One, excuse me, one percent inflation growth. So we are not making any assumptions that any business is going to expand as a result of this. That's our hope, and if we do get that, then our more conservative figures that we're presenting to you in this report will actually do better. And by including that entire area in the TIF, any expansion that happens there will benefit the TIF, will actually help us pay it off earlier than the twenty-year projection that we have. Alan, anything I missed, the one percent I missed, anything else that you think might be appropriate to kind of shed light on things that got discussed at the council, at the Plan Commission meeting last week?
I don't believe so. I'll, I'll bring up another subject in that, just to remind the council that we need to do this regardless of whether a TIF district gets created, because we are under requirements from Wisconsin DNR to reduce our runoff into the Lake Winnebago and the Fox River. So one way or the other, the city's going to need to do this sometime. This is just the, the best time, it seems, to not only help with economic development, but improve our environmental conditions as well simultaneously.
This project was originally going to be in twenty fifteen, or, excuse me, twenty sixteen?
The study is fourteen.
Originally?
We were, we had money in the two thousand fourteen.
Okay. We were already going to start the study this year, anyway, so that just gives you an idea that this was a project that we had planned all along. We might have reprioritized it if the TIF wasn't getting formed, but with the TIF getting formed, there's a wonderful opportunity to address a priority stormwater issue and find a funding source for it in the process, and perhaps spur some development. So that's why we're excited that, that we're able to bring these opportunities together at the same time. And happy, I just wanted to get you a little background, because next week, or in two weeks, the whole TIF's there, the development agreement's there, we wanted to give you an opportunity. If you had any questions, happy to answer them. If this helps stir questions, please call Mr. Davis or me, or Mr. Pottek if it's a technical issue with the stormwater. But again, we're just getting the process started on the, the technical side of the review.
I got one question.
Sure.
It says that we're going to be borrowing four-point-four for program. How does that affect our, our debt, which is way up?
This will have to be managed in the context of our borrowings, but this will be the priority borrowing for the stormwater utility for, for twenty fifteen. This project won't get going until the study's complete. So in terms of us reprioritizing projects, we've been doing two major stormwater projects a year. I believe we're going to have to scale back to one major stormwater project a year. This will be our major stormwater project. So other projects that you've heard about, such as the Ninth Avenue Stormwater Detention Pond, that's going to have to get pushed back. Other projects, the Nicolay Libby area, that we've already purchased the land, we're going to have to scale that back. I know there's a lot of excitement to get those projects done, but because of this unique opportunity, this one rises to the top of the list because of its urgency with the opportunity it presents itself.
Any other questions at this point? As indicated, I'd ask that we have this kind of review tonight, because this is a little bit more expansive than, than the information we got earlier, so we got a couple of weeks now to look through it and.
One other question, on page four, it talks about the creation date. Is it because it was in the CIP for twenty fourteen that the creation date of this taxable is January one of twenty fourteen?
No, that's by statute. Statute requires that the formation date is January one. If it's done before September twentieth or something like that, it gets backdated to the first of the year. If it's approved after that date in September, it gets moved forward to the following year. This will be approved somewhere this summer, so it gets backdated to one-one-fourteen.
This, this may come out at the next council meeting, but there was some discussion that this was going to create some jobs in the community. You want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Absolutely. In Perfect Seal's TIF application, they identified two job, significant job actions. One is retaining a hundred and sixty jobs that are already located at North Main Street. Those were in danger of being relocated. They're also going to be adding another hundred and sixty jobs if we can succeed in retaining the, the Perfect Seal clean room and operations they have out there and expanding it by a hundred and ten thousand square feet of, of working space. So it'll be a lot of value and jobs, based on what Perfect Seal's presented us, they'd be above-average wage jobs for the, for the city of Oshkosh as well. Okay, thank you.
Coming a little bit further on that. If this gets approved, there's going to have to be a development plan, correct?
Development agreement.
I'm sorry, development agreement. In that development agreement, one of the things I'd ask for, because I'm concerned about jobs, is that, since this is a Pago, that we don't let money out until the jobs begin to get created. So be looking for that in the development agreement, and I think that, that's understood, is that the jobs are going to have to be produced, there's going to be an audit up front and at the end before the jobs. So it's pretty clear, but that will come in the actual development agreement if this gets approved. So we'll see that, probably not till just the future.
The city attorney and I were just reviewing that today.
Okay. So that, that'll be a critical ingredient.
Yeah, then, then that's important. Just one other, you mentioned that we're voting on this at the next council meeting, but the other tax entities are voting after it. What would happen if one of those tax entities voted it down, and we voted in favor of it?
I misspoke. The Joint Review Board is the, is legally the final say. It requires an affirmative vote of three of the five members of the Joint Review Board. The city has a representative, schools, Volk Tech, county, as well as a citizen member, in this case, former mayor Bill Castle. So three of those five have to vote in the affirmative. The school district merely sends their person with a vote, already directed to them. Everybody else votes on at the meeting. The school district has just done that the last few years. So I misspoke when I said that, that we need all of them. We don't need all of them, we just need three of the five members to vote. Throw me off a little bit. I threw off, my bad.
Ms. Pansky, what we're doing here, when we create a TIF district, is we're actually capturing the taxes that might go to those other entities. So when they vote, what they're agreeing to is they're agreeing for a period of time that on the additional tax that's paid in, they will allow it to come to pay here rather than take that money out and sell.
Yes, I had a department tour with finance last week, and I was given information on the TIF, so.
Okay.
It was broken down very nicely by Ms.
Okay, good, good. Just want to make sure, that's understood.
Yes.
So, so the others really have to approve it, because they're, in essence, allowing tax money to come back into it. So they would have, the three out of five do have to approve it, so that's critical. Okay. Any other questions on this? I ought to look for a motion for adjournment.
Need to invite Mr. Nect to come back.
Yeah. Is he still out there?
Yeah.
I thought he might have taken off. I thought that's where he wanted to change the agenda, though.
Yeah, yeah, I mean it.
Okay, look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I see briefly the folks that are?